Which of course, not much, I mean slight increases across their manager salaries and whatever. They got other than that, it's really the same. And then we give you the police, and we'll see an increase there. I'll get a couple pages here and...
So we're anticipating a higher floor, please?
If we were to fully staff, I believe that's what we'd do. We'd have ten full-time employees. So we could do that, I don't know if we're able to find how many we have right now.
Of eight.
Yeah. You got what?
Eight.
He's got eight. So we are up to eight. So that's not going to cover salaries of ten people, what you have listed in there.
What's your average here?
That's my average for who?
Average of boys. It's usually down a couple, aren't you?
Well, we, I use the, I use the cushion to balance the budget because after the general fund, I'm going to get next number of dollars and to buy things that we need to continue to operate and can't employ people.
Crosswalk guards, how much do they get paid now?
I believe it's eight dollars now.
You know, it, we used to pay nineteen fifty for the crosswalk guard.
Yeah, it's the same.
It's the same?
Yeah.
Five dollars or?
Yeah.
Saint John?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So anyway, that's on the personnel side, you would see an increase in there if we went to ten full-time and kept them for the entire full-time, about a year there. I think on the other increase, you're actually going to see requests from the police department basically, vehicles and some other equipment, that they've got safety equipment, office equipment, where they've got, and radio equipment, I know they've got computer server, whatever that needs to be replaced, and whatever, some other equipment that you've got going on. You know, whether we can accomplish all that in one year or something.
I'd like to see that, the, I was up there visiting Dave and he explained to me about the data server. I mean, if we lost it, everything would be gone. Everything? Everything. I would like to see us go to with the Kansas Highway Patrol. And just like it says here, costs six thousand dollars for the new server with installation, no cost for the first two years, two hundred dollars per licensed user, maybe a year after that. We've got to do something to make sure that those records up there are protected and easily accessed.
Yeah, and I think you're down to the best program we're going to get because some of the other ones were quoted were much higher and I don't think they probably are as good. I mean, use the friendly is the one that you got here, so, yeah, I think that's, you know, that'd be a good move and, yeah, you don't want to lose your police data for an increase in any time.
I think the sheriff's office has expressed an interest in this also, they're going to be saving a bunch of money for the county, so, I mean, it just, it's ludicrous to me to pay thirty thousand dollars to like this global system when you can get all the, I mean...
Yeah, well, I think you just include that for comparison.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of a common one, but then we dig a little bit deeper and we'll find a much better deal on that, so. But anyway, so, yeah, that'll happen. And of course, most police departments are driven by information, I mean, they're in the information business, if you think about it, that's a lot of what they do there.
What's your priorities, Dave, for, if you could live without, what is it?
I can live without personnel.
You can live without personnel? Oh, right.
They're expensive.
He's a nut.
He's a, we're going to write that down.
You've got that many hours in your day.
Wow, yeah.
See, I, we're making it with eight, we're allotted ten, I save you guys money, I buy stuff I need. The equipment's going to, the equipment, I'm just going to tell you, the technological advances that we're seeing today, we're not, we're not keeping up. And it's going to be a problem for us. The data systems are back before Frank J. So you're looking at at least five years, seven years already, and we haven't updated anything.
My question, I guess, is if that's a top priority, that's fine, but you need to have, I mean, is it necessary to have two cars in one year or?
No, no, you, I, per our conversation, you told me to budget what I thought I needed for the year, and that's what I did. Now, I can, I can live without two cars, yes, that's, that's my whole point, but yes, but you, I, I was, I budgeted as I was instructed to budget.
Yeah, that's my, that's my point is...
Yes, I can live without two cars.
It comes time to get down to the middle.
Right, no, and that's, that's typically what Glenn would ask me about when I submitted a budget, what can I live without? And then we kind of go from there, and Mandy and I would say, well, we're going to get this, or we're going to get that, and that's how it works. But no, I don't have to have two cars.
I just wanted to, I don't know if it's psychological evaluations, physicals, jail fees, do you want to explain that increase and why that's necessary?
Well, because in, whoever's eminent wisdom, Pawnee's eminent wisdom, they decided that we have to take all mental calls to the hospital to be screened prior to them screening them. And we have to pay that. So we have to pay for emergency room visit, a physical evaluation, and if they're drunk, then we have to sit on them for however long it takes them to become under legal evidence.
Are we responsible still for their medical?
That's correct.
Yeah, if the person's, that I'd be just, we have to provide their...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep.
Just, I guess, just a comment there, that's, that's a policy that Pawnee has implemented and is not going anywhere. They're trying to save money as well, so we're going to have those expenses whether we like it or not, so, just so y'all know.
And most of the other increases are, most of the federal funding that we used to get for training in schools are no longer available. So we are having to fund those ourselves now versus we used to be able to take advantage of federal grants in schools that wouldn't cost us anything. And now the feds don't do that anymore, the state doesn't do that anymore. So they, they pushed a lot of, even the state agencies have pushed a lot of the expenses of training, upkeep, data management, off to local agencies rather than doing it themselves.
Could, could you explain fifty-four hundred, uh, legal, I think?
What's that?
Fifty-four hundred, um, page six. Yeah, no, it's publications.
Publications, we don't advertise it.
No, the illegal advertising, law books, we have to maintain a law library, whether, I mean, it is what it is. And those aren't cheap, if you haven't seen, well, I'm sure the city attorney can tell you how expensive the law libraries are.
Many, it's in two thousand thirteen, the actual was around thirteen hundred.
It doesn't mean that's how much we'll spend in one year. It could go a lot.
So anyway, just to kind of summarize where he's going with that, you know, we haven't, in the last, we actually got ten full-time employees for the entire fiscal year, so that would be one place where we could, and we could see some savings there. You know, of course, would be the vehicles, typically the two biggest items that you can see. Any police force tends to be what the biggest expenses are for that relief, the rest of our material type of things, and we know are coming their way. So, you know, probably the best choice there is look at the vehicles pretty hard, what we can do with those, and adjust the personnel situation there and see what we can, we can do on that side too. Other than that, that's, that's where I would...
Well, what about buying a vehicle? A year of time until you get caught up?
Yeah, typically, that's what they, you know, they've, they've leased vehicles on a regular basis and rotated them, so they're getting at least one new one every year. And so that's kind of what the, the department has typically done, and I think they will rotate them on like three-year leases over the time they're kind of out of useful life and the lease payments done. And I'm sure the chief has got an opinion on that.
Realistically, your vehicle bid looks so high because as I, as I was, had a discussion with a couple council members, they wanted to buy vehicles outright rather than lease them. And that was why that's so high.
Right, but that, but that number is for two, is that?
That's two, that's two.
That would be two, yes, sir, yeah. And that would, that would be bought outright rather than leased over a three-year.
And the lease payments that we were making would have bought a vehicle every year anyway.
It, it would have, however, did it this year, we, we own every vehicle of the fleet, so you're looking at starting at a new, and if we get back on a single vehicle rotation is which we've done in the past.
That didn't work out well though because we got vehicles way older than three years.
And that's, that is correct, and, and since we, this is the first year with place city patrol vehicles there.
Thank you. So, yeah, I mean, so that's the increase there, have you purchased two new vehicles out of suspension and going to full staffing on that side. So that, that's a major expense there, and, you know, so we can start to see some reductions or savings on, on that side. Okay, the next one is the fire department, and this is just showing their, basically, their operating, most of their salaries and their expenses they normally have. And it's not going to look much different than the year before. I know Chief Laidis has got a different request here for you, looking at a vehicle, I think would be the big thing that you would...
Yeah, one of the items, well, it's not a big ticket, it's big enough, but next year, we have composite bottles that are done in fifteen years. After fifteen years, they're no longer usable. So we have eight of those that are coming up, you're looking at an eight thousand dollar purchase there. Thousand dollars.
We're talking about SCBA?
SCBA box, yeah. Okay, but then the bad news is we have a truck that's due for replacement, but we're on thirty-year rotation and it's a pump roof and it needs to be replaced next year. Talked to the vendors, they're talking three hundred thousand. It, it's just, it's crazy what fire equipment does with the NFPA standards, what they change. But anyway, that's, that's the story there, is, I mean, it's a truck, we, we rotate every thirty years, and at the end of thirty years, with Lloyd water and whatever, they're, they're needing to get them. They're, they've got valve problems and leaks, and plus they're just, yeah, I know what you're saying. But I'm just saying that, you know, after thirty, it doesn't seem like, you know, that it would be that way, but it is. Getting tired, so, that one's up for replacement and just giving you a heads up on it.
Didn't you, didn't you usually transfer money into a fund?
At one time, there was thirty thousand rolled in every year for equipment reserve, but that's no longer done. That's, they, I don't know, that stopped what, ninety, two or three years ago?
Yeah, we didn't have, the general fund had no money.
I think as soon as Grover left, it, it stopped. So there's no reserve money ever put back on that. And all the trucks prior, we had either reserve money built up, or we, one truck, we had some grant money left over from the station and on and on, but it's worked. But I'm just, that, that's where we're at now. And, you know, another thing I want to call your attention to too is if, you know, you're talking about acquiring more real estate around the town, you know, bringing, bringing out, basically extending the city limits. And that's something that you need to consider at that time is fire protection and what you're going to have to do. You know, you may end up with another truck if you're, to keep your ISO ratings, so, you know, because of your added coverage. So, just some food for thought, I'm just telling you that, but I'm saying for right now, we just need to worry about what we got going on here, and that's we need a new truck in two thousand fifteen. Any questions or?
How much do you recommend that we put in reserves for next year? In this year?
Well, I'll tell you, Matt, thirty thousand as a rule worked. It got us really close, you know, pretty close. And of course, the thing that is with, with NFPA, what they're doing with, you know, changing, you know, making requirements on these trucks and costs to them, that would probably be a question for the vendor, not me. You know, what they consider would be reserve money to, to make that work. I, I probably would not, I would not want to say I, I retract that thirty thousand until I talk to a, you know, people.
Right, but I mean, it makes sense because it's not an expense that we can really do without, we can't go without fire protection.
Right, well, and your ratings, yeah. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We're on fire, we wanted to, transportation. Increase, I'll actually hold a steady on salaries, but on part-time and overtime, we're going to slightly increase on that. But not too much more going forward as far as the personnel side goes.
Part-time salaries, that just for summer?
Yes, that's what I'd like to do.
Yeah, we were, you know...
That's what I'd like to do is get some seasonal, some kids to work with us during the summer. We've got a lot of things, we've got full-time employees out doing things that kids can handle.
How are we on staff, do we have a hundred percent?
No, we're not a hundred percent. We've got Pat Cruz, who's been out probably two and a half, three months.
We didn't see him coming back.
Well, I don't know, his doctor hasn't released him yet, and I called him three days ago and he's supposed to come and talk to me and find out what's going on with him. That's kind of put us, you know, short-handed. But that's what the eleven, or the twenty-three thousand is, is I'd like to get some, reinvent the seasonal, because they, they helped us out quite a bit in prior years.
How many, how many more full-time employees do we need to get? Because you said we're not at a hundred percent, is it just Pat?
Just Pat, and then it, it depends on what goes on with the department head.
Correct.
But it's just Pat at this point, and Mike being gone right now is temporary, I hope.
So, street fund, that's not going to get any raises? Or are they budgeting too much money this year?
Well, I mean, they actually, the actual in two thousand thirteen was about three seventy-six, and then, you know, I'm not sure we're going to end up in two thousand fourteen and, so we felt pretty comfortable with that with the part-time and the ten thousand, actually, we had, you know, separated out there for overtime. Get pretty good about that, so. That's the increase, and then, of course, the other increase that he's got in here is for motor vehicles, so I might want to address that quick as far as, as far as...
Well, uh, Mike put this budget together and I kind of tweaked a few things, I left that, he wants to buy a new dump truck. We are getting pretty poor, we've got some trucks that we use every day that we could put antique tags on. They're seventy-seven that's, or flatbed, our flatbed trucks are our main trucks, we use every day. They are getting pretty, pretty bad shape. Well, I, I'm thinking what he was planning on doing was buying a dump truck, putting the flatbed on one of our other dump trucks and doing it that way, instead of actually buying a truck. I never got a chance to talk to Mike, we were supposed to get together for a couple of days before he left, but...
Yeah, I believe that's...
So I'm kind of winging it.
I think, if he explained that to me, it's...
I think that's what his thought.
I remember that, yeah, it was a dump truck, so. I guess the, the common theme that's running so far is that each department has a need for a vehicle or vehicles, whether it's police, transportation, fire department, or whatever, and that's, that's been sort of a theme, I guess, in the whole, whole field.
Yes, it has been asked two or three times about a, um, plan for replacing equipment in properties or buildings or whatever. Capital improvement plan, and I believe you said that we do have one?
Well, yeah, the one, one I'm thinking about is, is the one that uses a casual capital improvement, sales taxes generated through that.
That's not a plan.
Right.
That's just money coming in and you just decide, we decided to do it instant when it comes in, what we're going to spend it on.
Well...
Plans should go out four, five, ten years on rotation of vehicles and all kinds of things.
Yeah, it's sort of a capital equipment type of a plan, yeah. Right, well, that's, that's kind of starting what we're doing here, I mean, again, there, there's many more needs here than we could ever fill in with budget here, but that's what your question is going to, I mean, so...
Absolutely, yes, but if we don't have a plan, how do we know what we're going to do over the next four or five years to correct a part of that?
Right, well... We can always put that money in there and not spend it, then we'll have that year, unless we have that plan. I think that would too, I guess, but...
Well, yeah, you, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the police department, the part, the, most of the departments, we had like a five-year rotation plan, I believe, for vehicles.
Well, it went, at one time it went further than that.
Yeah.
It was whatever each department thought that that vehicle needed to be rotated, and what year it needed to be replaced, and so we knew ahead of time.
But they did do away with that, they should have.
One year, the hit with all the fire department.
Yeah.
We've got to start somewhere, we can't buy all these vehicles now, we've got leased part of this money in there. Like, like Dave said, he doesn't have to have it in car.
Right, I suspect that's what's going to happen.
We can put some money in this year, then next year we'll have that money in reserve, and that, that would satisfy Lloyd's query there about a plan anywhere, or at least start of it.
Well, I mean, you can draw on some more detailed equipment, like, you know, his vehicles that lasted three years on the police side, and so you can show that rotation of them going in and out. Fire department, twenty years, thirty years, and whatever, and when they would be going, you know, out of service at that point or whatever. And all the rest of them are, you know, similar things, as you see going forward down there. But it's certainly, that's certainly possible to do that. But anyway, this, this is the request for this year, as you can see, most of, have to do with vehicles, and it's, it's going to be tough to, you know, fund all particles in one year. Just is, again, that's, that's what drive up that middle, that we showed earlier, to pretty, pretty high levels. I'm not sure we'd be real comfortable doing that. But anyway. So that, that's transportation side there, so. Then we get to our department rep, we got the recreation grounds first for them, and that's broken down into their different categories, and again, the, you know, the salaries are pretty much...
That's one department head?
Holding steady, there are ones that went full-time, fully, I guess, in that sense.
Is that Lynn?
Yeah.
That building, is that the white building?
Yes.
Yes.
What could we potentially get rent off of that, because it's a real good building, air conditioning and so forth? I mean, I know that we rented out.
Currently, we get fifty dollars for a rental now.
Do you think you could rent it for or anything?
I, I truly believe you could if it was air-conditioned, you know, people want it, but it's really hot in the summer, and it, it really is not in good shape. If it had a nice restroom, maybe a kitchenette, I could see it being used. It can't be rented in the winter because the lights haven't. So it'd have, I mean, you'd have to wait until after they were out of that time, but other than that, I can...
I mean, I think it'd be ideal for family reasons.
You get a lot of use, I'm sure.
Graduation.
That's pretty cheap rent, we'd have to raise the rent.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you had it air-conditioned, you would have to...
Well, and I don't think people would have a problem paying higher rent for that type of facility.
People would use it to rent, I have business meetings, and let me tell you, it's almost impossible to place a town to hold a, have a group of people come in and have a meeting. Tom wants the schedules and meetings down there.
I would, because of that, I mean, I have to do a Heather L.
Lynn took, took me through that administrative building up there at the north campus, there's a lot of places in there you could rent out, even make apartments and everything out of that thing. I had pretty good dreams about all that stuff. And it's been there, and, you know, it deteriorates every day if nobody's in there, and it, it might well be utilized.
It's not used for.
I'd say knock it down. Yep, knock it down.
Administration.
I'd like to see your suggest.
Something that would get a lot more use if it was more used. Right, if you had a decent building out there in the park and that setting, a lot of cool and all that, yeah, I'm sure it'd be a lot more use.
I think it'd be, I'd give it...
That's excellent setting there.
I did with the, the pool and everything.
The pool, you have, you know, a nice rope going through there, camping areas through there, and, you know, all those things we have to offer, from tennis courts to, you know, whatever. Yeah, it's a really nice setting to have in the park there, but the building has, seems better than people do.
Would it, all the lights take up the whole building?
Yes.
Pretty much.
When they take it over.
Were we conceivable to build it enough bigger that they would still have room to rent out, or?
We would have to take out some of the area, the playground, the horseshoe, I mean, we have a plan. I mean, we actually have looked into it and got some cost estimates, just because we wanted to know. We were looking at moving the building, going north and south instead of east and west, because the parking would be on a grid that it could be ADA accessible instead of at the angle it is. And so, I mean, there's some things that we've kind of looked at, we've looked at the building being enough to have a storage room so you could have tables and chairs if people wanted them. And I know this sounds kind of elaborate, but even a balcony that looks over the park, I mean, there was just some things that we were looking at to make it more wonderful.
Or would it be prohibited to have a basement and have a storm shelter down there?
Well, and that's another thing I've looked into, if, if we're going to do it, we need to do it right and have a storm shelter, because our pool has no storm shelter, and the campers have no storm shelter.
That always worried me with my kids.
And, and I do have a number for FEMA, I don't know whether FEMA still has money for storm shelters, but I have a contact number, but I've never contacted them because we're not near that time.
Yeah, well, the tech college is there.
Tech college is there, yeah, that's typical something they do, Pawnee, so, I don't know if they still do, but they have it now, so...
I think it'd be, I'd even, I'd encourage you to look into more.
I think that'd be a nice priority, you know.
Well, and as you can see, for that, for that grounds department, that's, that's the, for the major increase that is going forward will be up there in that five. The rest we can see some sort of slight increases as you go, and some of them holding steady, but most of it's going to be, if you choose to go that route, that's a building, I'm not sure when that was constructed, it's been around for a while, and it's, it's been, I guess, different things over the years, I guess that was the park's head, parks and rep headquarters at one time. It's been converted to what it is, so, we'll have to make that choice coming forward here this year or next year, but it is not in real great shape as it is. That's it, we've been out there. Anyway, that, that is kind of what drive, will drive up for that portion of their budget, the rest of it, as I said, is going on, any great increases there. Then going forward, we have expenditures for the building division there, and it looks like the largest amount there increase would be a little additional, twenty, I'm not sure what you got in mind there, Lynn, what's, what do you think, building additions for a hundred and twenty?
Well, special education is going to have some problems with the roof. We've looked into it, got a bit, our estimate about a year ago, it's looking at thirty thousand to, to replace that roof, and it does leak. We have patched it, and we have patched it. The other thing that we're looking at is a new air conditioning unit. The air conditioning unit that is in there now... The air conditioning unit that is in there now has a freon leak and they have to keep continuing putting freon in it. And it is, I mean, we can repair the lines and we are repairing the lines, but if you knew how many lines are in there, I mean, it's just going to continually be a problem. The other thing is we'd like to put new valves in, which right now, that temperature is done by an air compressor and don't want to ask me a lot of technical questions, okay? But that air compressor continually runs because that changes, and don't look at me like that, changes the, the valves, and if it gets stuck, then they have no heat or air.